The Tuesday, May 17th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council.
I'll come to order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity called Open Podium for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Our council meetings are typically held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and open podium is from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chamber. If you wish to speak to the council at this time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I'll open the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised, and if you have any questions, please call the city manager's office. Today, we're going to start off with a report on our audit. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, statute requires that by June 30th of each year, the city prepare a financial report of all our activities for the previous year, and this report is then forwarded to the state. The preparation of the report is done by the finance division and prepared and reviewed by our independent auditing firm, which is Kern DeWinter Veer Limited, and they've issued an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that a city can receive. And we have Steve Wishman, who's a partner with the firm here tonight, to make a presentation of our annual financial report and our audit report.
Thank you. Good evening, your honor, and members of council. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to walk you briefly through the audit results for 2010. You will note that there are three documents that are issued as part of the audit process. The large comprehensive annual financial report, which I believe will be available on the city's website once accepted, is the official document. Again, on pages two and three of that report, we have issued a clean or unqualified opinion on the financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance that we issue on the financial statements. Congratulations for receiving that highest award. This report will also be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for approval for the certificate of achievement in financial reporting, a certificate of excellence. You have received that award since 1998, and we believe that to be in compliance with that as well. And that is the highest level of excellence in reporting as well from non-authoritative body with the Government Finance Officers Association. In addition to that, we also issue reports on compliance with government auditing standards, and for 2010, you also expended enough federal money that you needed to have a single audit performed in accordance with the OMB Circular 133. That is a separate document that is just eight, 10 pages in length, and you do have a copy of that in front of you as well. That, again, we've issued a clean or unqualified report on compliance with government auditing standards and the Single Audit Act, OMB Circular 133. Again, the highest level of reports that we can issue, and congratulations for receiving those. Basically, it means that we followed all the applicable laws and regulations in expending those dollars. The final report that we are required to report on is a compliance with Minnesota legal compliance. That is a statute-driven legal compliance manual that the state auditor's office provides to us on an annual basis, and again, there were no compliance findings of any nature there as well. So, this essentially is the cleanest audit that you can receive, the best that we can issue. There were no internal control findings, no material audit adjustment findings, no findings of any nature with any of our standards, and that is a rarity. There is usually some type of compliance or opinion or internal control that we report on. So, again, this is a very excellent audit report. We did talk in the meeting prior, just again briefly, on the financial condition of the city, and again, I'm pleased to report that you had a very stable 2010 and remain in excellent financial condition. Your bond rating agent obviously agrees and provides you with the highest rating of assurance on the general obligation debt that's issued as well. So, again, a very, very excellent report with the economy that is struggling. It is always nice to see that very stable economic conditions at the city, and again, you've maintained that very, very well. Finally, I want to just follow up and just thank the finance department for all their hard work with the audit process. It does begin shortly after year end. We're on-site for a week or two in March, finishing up the audit reports and presenting here tonight. And again, it is a very comprehensive effort by your staff, and again, I just want to thank the finance department for all their hard work and providing such a smooth and clean audit for us to be able to serve you with at the city of Eden Prairie. So, again, just wanted to say thank you, and would be happy to answer any questions you may have relating to the audit process or any of the financial information at this time.
Any questions? Okay, I don't want our lack of questioning of our auditor to be seen as lack of interest, but we did have a workshop part of this meeting where we met with him for quite some time and asked lots of questions. So, thank you, appreciate you doing the audit and getting some nice, good news again. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Don't we need to approve the report?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do.
I'd like to move to accept the 2010 comprehensive annual financial report.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to our finance department, too, for keeping us in this kind of wonderful situation and helping with the budget process that they do, which we don't always make easy for them. But it's very nice to get this kind of report.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add? I would like to add two under reports of council members.
Mayor, I was just going to add too, that you can see on your desk are two items to add for consent. It's an additional clerk's license that was added for Santorini's, and then you'll see the lease agreement with MAC for the community gardens was added as well.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Asso.
The agenda does show a closed session, and we will be having a closed session, which will detail as we, just before we go into it.
Okay, great, thank you. All in favor of the agenda is amended.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the workshop held on Tuesday, May 3rd?
Move approval.
Second.
Any changes? I have a change on page two of the workshop agenda, or the workshop minutes. There's a paragraph that starts with my name, and that last sentence there, I'd like to change a little bit to, she would like to know if they have fees or other funding mechanisms that should be considered in looking at the overall tax burden. Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the council meeting minutes for the same date, May 3rd?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to question? Okay, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent calendars, or motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion?
Just want to question item P briefly.
Okay.
Not really a question about P as much as it raises a question about another parcel. The, in reading item P and reading about the old city, well, MAC will be held harmless injury, and I'm assuming it's mostly about injuries because of the gardening component, but many of you are aware of the historic lookout, which is also under MAC control, and back in a study in the 90s was recommended to be considered for National Register of Historic Places. And I just wonder if the fact that we're agreeing, or MAC is agreeing, to this parcel having people on it, could we at least refer back to the Flying Cloud Airport Commission to, again, look at the lookout area? And I realize there probably is a Zone A, Zone B difference, I'm not sure on that. But I would love to see that lookout area somehow have some limited people visitation rights, and this reminded me that if they allow it in certain areas, especially Zone B, then why not the lookout? So, if I could have, that doesn't pertain directly to this, but it relates to this in that if we're approving this tonight, it'd be great if Flying Cloud Airport Commission could at least be made aware, maybe through staff, that relative to this, maybe look at the lookout area again.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if that's relevant, but I wanted to raise it right there.
Mr. Lott Hammer.
Thank you, your honor. Councilmember Case, if I could just give you a quick update to give a little more color and background to it, since I was actually standing on that parcel today at the lookout park. You may have seen it in our capital improvement plan, that we would have some type of a lookout. We weren't actually contemplating it there based on what we have heard from MAC over time, as we've asked about that. My understanding, and certainly I would agree with moving forward and asking the commission to look into that, but my understanding in the differences between those two properties is the north-south runway takes you directly over top, and the lookout, the old lookout park is at the end of it. And so, one of the things I was doing today with a couple landscape architects is we were doing some basically photo reconnaissance, looking at the materials that were out there. We were on-site with the permission of MAC, and so, looking at how do we capture that in future design if we do have a trail outlet just a couple hundred yards down from there to overlook the Minnesota River? Can we recapture what that looks like? And surprisingly, it is a ruins, but there's a lot of it that's, you know, intact. You can kind of tell what it used to be. So, from a historic registry standpoint, that still has some, definitely some value, even if it isn't something that, at this time in our history, that could go forward with active use. They have an issue of any type of congregation there at this point. They, if you were to even pull off, and that's why we had a MAC representative with us, if you were even to pull off there, they would actively come and ask you to leave because of their zone that it happens to fall under. And it seems a little more logical, obviously, the garden plots aren't right directly off the end of a runway, but, so certainly, there's a couple tracks, and the reason I wanted to comment is just to let you know that this is something that's on our radar, that we're directly actively working with and exploring some options, as well as options with the Fish and Wildlife Service on how do we get access to the trail that will eventually come along the river bottom. So, yeah, it's a good point.
Clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, I agree with councilmember Case that it is one of the most beautiful spots we have in Eden Prairie, and it really isn't accessible. I mean, there are chains through there, and you're not really supposed to go there at all. And one of the reasons, I think, is that it was a, there were a lot of broken bottles, and it was kind of a disaster in terms of folks partying maybe and leaving debris there. So, I have been worried about that site in terms of the impact that folks have had on it that really shouldn't have access to it. So, I'm not sure how to figure out both of those things, because we really would like for people to be able to access that site, but then we've got the MAC situation, and then also the debris situation, and folks were even harvesting the stone, the historic stone, from that beautiful historic site. So, you know, there's a couple of complications to that, but I would love to be able to move forward and have that be another of our historic places that people can visit.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to pull anything for discussion? Oh, no, no problem. Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brings us to the first of our public hearings, the Eric Schaefer addition. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, the property owners for the Eric Schaefer addition request for a preliminary plat on 1.5 acres into two lots, 6451 Evergreen Court and 6516 Kurtz Lane. The property owners in this case have agreed to relocate a common lot line between the two properties. Proposed lot line one will increase in size from 22,000 square feet to 40,849 square feet. Proposed lot two will decrease in size from 43,000 square feet approximately to 24,500 square feet. Both lots meet the requirement of the R-122 zoning district. A resolution for final approval of the subdivision is located in the ordinances and resolutions section of the agenda. The 120-day review period expires on July 24th, 2011. This item was approved by the planning commission seven to zero at their April 25th, 2011 meeting. A notice of this public hearing was published in the May 5th, 2011 Eden Prairie News and was sent to 47 property owners, and I believe the applicants are right here tonight related to this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have a presentation you wanted to make, or did you just want to hold for questions?
Just hold for questions. I think you summarized everything pretty clearly.
Okay, great, thank you. Council, questions? Kathy Nelson.
I'd just like a real, out of curiosity, what is the reason behind deciding to do this? I take it one property needs the more space and for some purpose?
As part of it. The other is my, front of my house, this is a property that's not being used, and I'd like to make sure that it always stays as a wildlife preserve. That's the only, you know, only purpose.
You know, if I may add, I'm Richard Hunt on behalf of Joseph Hunt, my son, who owns the property. This is a section of land that Eric is acquiring that is really way, way in back into the side, which has no use to us, but has great advantage to Mr. Schaefer. And we're still left with about 24,000 square feet. So, in my opinion, this is a win-win situation for everybody.
Sounds like it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Okay.
Oh, wait a sec. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to come to the podium and address the council on this issue? Okay.
Seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for a preliminary plat on 1.5 acres into two lots.
Any discussion? All in favor of motion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It's taken care of.
There may be a...
There will be a second issue.
Council, there may be a second issue here that we could address while we're up here, which is item number...
Oh.
11.
11A.
11, which is the same property.
You know, can, it'll take us two minutes to get to that.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
If you wouldn't mind just sitting so we can stay in order.
Okay, no, no problem.
Makes it easier for our recorder and everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the second item under public hearings is a resolution amending Tiff District number 15.
Yes, mayor, this was for the Summit Place Senior Housing Project. This was a public hearing that we continued from May 3rd to this meeting, and we're asking that the council continue it one more time to June 14th, so all the materials can come in and be processed.
Okay.
Move to continue the public hearing to June 14, 2011.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Hearing done, roll call, please. Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens. Aye. Thank you. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, this is Eric Schaefer addition again. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, we are back to this item again, and the synopsis is the exact same as what I just read. It's simply having the preliminary plat and the final plat at the same meeting at the same time for the benefit of the applicant. So, the action, then, is to approve the final plat for the same project that we were discussing just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
We need a unanimous vote on this?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, the proponents, did you want to address us again on this issue, otherwise we're going to vote on the final plat?
No, we're perfectly satisfied. We're satisfied.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution approving the final plat of Eric Schaefer addition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, now it's really done. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, your honor. Council.
Okay, moving on, reports of council members. I wanted to mention that I have gotten some feedback from the Southwest LRT Community Works group, that they would really like it if we had both our regular delegate and our alternate to that group be council members. And at this present time, councilmember Kathy Nelson is our delegate, and we've had Janet Jeremiah, our director of planning, who has been going to the meetings and sitting in as alternate. But at this point, now that I know that Brad Aho is willing to serve as the alternate, I would propose to appoint Brad as the alternate to the Southwest Community Works. Ms. Jeremiah will still attend the meetings as a staff person, so we actually end up with more involvement, which is even better. And Brad as alternate, you are welcome to go to all the meetings, even if Kathy is there, but now Kathy has somebody to make sure is at those meetings if she cannot attend. So, thank you for being willing to do it.
You're welcome.
Could somebody make a motion to appoint him?
So move that Brad Aho becomes the alternate to the Light Works Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is, this is kind of an important meeting for us, because we have a public works director who is retiring after 30 years, and I just wanted to make a few comments about Gene. I first met Gene on a bus on a Watershed District tour, and I don't even think that I was on the council at the time. I think the Watershed District was doing this tour, and they invited all the council candidates to attend, and I went on this bus not knowing anybody, and Gene was so nice. He sat down with me, and we talked, and it made me feel even more like I wanted to be a member of the city council, because if all the staff were like Gene, they had to be great. And since that time, he's just done wonderful things for the city. He's been a great person for me personally to talk to. I thought of words that, in my mind, kind of personify Gene, and one of them is calm, intelligent, dedicated to your work, and really good at explaining things. I know I've met with you countless times to learn the acronyms in the public works business, find out about SAC and WAC, and go over storm sewer funds, and water and sewer, water and sewer, yeah, and storm drainage, that's what I meant to say, and talking about roads, and you explain things so thoroughly and so clearly that I walk out of those meetings feeling like I understand exactly what the issue is. That, you know, I forget in about a month, but you're crystal clear in your explanations. And Gene, you're a great person to work with. You always have a smile on your face, you always have a ready laugh, and you will be really hard to miss. So, thank you for your 30 years of work with the city.
Thank you, mayor, for your gracious comments. I should point out that it's 30 years tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm just a little bit short tonight.
Okay.
And accurate. You forgot about accurate.
And accurate, yeah, yeah. It's the numbers thing. So, thank you so much. What do you plan to do in retirement?
I think we'll give somebody else a turn at being engineer. I think we'll split our time between Lake Home and Eden Prairie Home, and we'll see what comes. Maybe I'll come back at a council meeting and talk about how my street gets plowed next winter.
All right.
Or you could just call the city manager.
I could, I could do that.
Gene, all I want to know is, are we still going to have access to your brain and pick it once in a while? Are we going to have your cell phone? So, when questions come up that are historical in nature, we don't know who to turn to, we can still give you a call once in a while?
You can do that. I expect to keep the same cell phone number, so that'd be fine.
Great, thank you.
Rodney Wilson.
We'll miss you.
I've known Gene for a long, long time, because I was a youth director at the Methodist Church, and I had his kids, and so I remember him as being supportive parent initially. But nothing in any way to demean engineers, because I have the greatest respect for them. But the perception of the typical engineer might be that you either are really good in public relations over here, or you're really good in your engineering expertise, and you really do bring both of those, and I think that's unique and rare. And you've been able, just as the mayor said, to take complicated issues and really explain them and really market what the city needs to do and why we do it and the good that we do, and so I think you've been invaluable these last decades, and you will be greatly missed.
Well, thank you very much. This has been a great place to work. It's been a fun ride, and if somebody would have asked me 30 years ago where I would be at in 30 years, I would have never assumed that I would stay in one place for so long. But it's a testimony to the great staff and the great people that we have to work with. It's been a pure joy to be here.
Mr. Getchell.
I want to add also, on behalf of the city staff as well, I haven't been here for a very long time, but in the time I've been here, I've witnessed just someone who's a great employee, a mentor, a leader of other city staff, someone who I've tried as much as possible in the time you have remaining to pick your brain, but I think you will be missed, and you will not be able to be replaced, and we really appreciate all the time that you put in. I thought maybe the mayor was going to mention she was on a high school tour when you went on, because I certainly know my, what would have been at that time my third grade class would have, will love to have gone on a bus tour with the illustrious public works director, but your time is greatly appreciated, and you're very well-respected. Again, not only with staff, but also throughout the entire state and area. So, I knew, you know, where I'd previously worked, that you were also very highly regarded in your field and with your peers as well.
Well, thank you very much. I think the next chapter, you're going to get at least five years' worth of blaming me on all of the things, and that's always a good thing, too, so, thank you.
Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yeah, I have to say something, too. You know, Gene, I think you and I have worked together for almost two of those three decades you've been here, because I was on the, yeah, commission before that. The thing that has always mattered so much to me is that I can count on you, always been able to count on you, and as we talked about, I, the level of trust that we have had in your judgment, in your perceptions, in your negotiations, fantastic. I don't know what we would have done without you, and look at the city, beautiful. And since you will have one of your homes here, you'll always get to drive by and go, "I did that. Look what we did." So, I want to personally thank you for years and years of being able to work with a great staff person. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that cherry, too, that in the 30 years that you've been here, really, most of the roads, most of the sewer, most of the water have gone across your desk, and so, as a city, we have to say thank you, because it's in really good shape, it works well, and we owe you a debt of gratitude.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, report of the community development director, reallocation of 2010, 2011 CDBG funds.
Your honor and council members, we indicated we'd probably be back with this one, and here we are. We're trying to combine two, though, the reallocation of 2010 funds, which are spendable to the end of August of this year, and then the reallocation of the 2011 funds, which go through July of next year. And the city does have an additional $4,000 in 2010 CDBG funds, and this is partially due to the fact that we stopped funding HomeLine based on a recommendation from HUD that because they just work with applicants over the phone, it's impossible to verify the income requirements. So, they're going to be needing to look for other funding, although we do believe it's a good program. And we also had an additional $1,500 in program income, a little bit higher than we expected, and this comes mostly from repayment of rehab loans. And so, the Human Service Review Committee did meet to discuss the 2010 allocation as well as the 2011 allocation, and with regard to 2010, recommended that the $4,000 be reallocated to CAPS's emergency car repair program, and they had requested $15,000 and were originally awarded only $5,500. That was spent in the first three months of 2010, and so, we do believe that they could utilize the additional $4,000 by the end of August. Like I said, they've been spending well over $1,000 a month. With regard to 2011, we came to you with an estimate previously in March, because we didn't have the final figures from HUD, and we do have that announcement now, and also have resolved the issue with HomeLine. So, again, between the adjustment in the final HUD numbers and the fact that we'd initially recommended funding HomeLine again in 2011, there are some changes there which have presented some opportunities to our other applicants, and we've raised, we've recommended raising YMCA's childcare subsidy by $1,000. That still doesn't get them up to their request of $15,000, but it gets them closer at 12. That still doesn't get them up to their request of $15,000, but it gets them closer at $12,000. We've recommended increasing home, household, and outside maintenance for the elderly by $1,000 to get them up to their request of $9,000. And we've recommended increasing CAPS to get them, again, closer to their request of $15,000, but still only up to $8,000 for 2011. And the other prop has remained the same at $25,000, which was their full request. And the remainder goes into our housing programs. And I'll certainly take any questions that you may have.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Jeremiah?
Seeing none, I move to approve the reallocation of 2010 and 2011 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Review Committee.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we have a report of Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Lotthammer.
Your Honor, councilmembers, this item is regarding the parking lot at Birch Island Woods. And many of you will remember that several months ago, six, eight months ago, actually, we brought this before the council with a concept plan and also showed you the location of where the parking lot was go, would go. In the meantime, we had an opportunity to work with the Watershed District. And Leslie Stovering identified this as a potential project that the Watershed District may look at favorably for a cost-share program. And so we did a little more research in how we could make this somewhat of a test case and handle stormwater in a very unique manner. And the way that we're doing that, and we've worked with a local Eden Prairie company who produces a product called Percola. And what Percola is, is it's six feet by six feet. So these are big slabs of concrete that are about six inches in depth. And the water, it's porous enough that the water will run directly through that. And so the benefit to us is, generally, if you put it in an asphalt parking lot, you have to handle the stormwater. And there's quite a bit of area that becomes stormwater ponds. And in this location, the more we can reduce the footprint, that's a very good thing. But also with this new product, that'll allow the water basically to seep right through and handle the rain. And it just, there's a decent amount of under drainage to it, too. But we don't have to get into that large stormwater pond, which would impact the site more than what we would need to if we go with this type of material. It is a little more costly, and so that's why the partnership with the Watershed District is important. It's important to them to try this type of technique and to test this material out. We believe that it's not such a test, that it's not worth trying in this location. It seems to be a very good fit for this particular location. So what you have before you tonight is authorization to execute this grant with the Watershed District. We still need final design plans to be approved by the district for stormwater management. It looks like if all were to move forward, we would start this in June, and the parking lot would be in place by the end of September, if not sooner than that. The one thing I would add is there are a couple of things that Mr. Russell has pointed out in the Watershed's agreement, that we would like to have a couple additions to satisfy our standards of contracts. And so we would ask that if you do approve this tonight, that you do approve it subject to additions by myself and the city attorney. We don't foresee that being any difficulty with the Watershed District, but it would add a page or a paragraph or two to the document.
Thank you. I had the benefit of attending the presentation that Percola did. I think, Ms. Lotthammer, you were there, and Leslie Stovering. I'm not sure who else was there. But it was fascinating to hear about this pervious concrete. And if I recall correctly, it also filters impurities out of the water over a period of time, too. So it's a wonderful product, and it is an Eden Prairie business, which is great, too. I think this is wonderful, and it's a great place to test this and see if we want to use it elsewhere in the city. Or it might even be something that when companies are building parking lots outside their stores, we'll have a place to go and show them, "This is what you can do, and this is how it works." So I think it's wonderful. The question that I have, though, is that $25,000 that we're getting from the Watershed District goes towards the $50,000 in estimated cost. We had kind of preliminarily budgeted $20,000, so where's the extra five coming from?
It looks like we'll be able to do some of the work in-house. And then we also have a small budget for some of the materials that would be within the under drainage that we would be able to handle through our operating budget.
Okay, okay. Ms., Councilmember Nelson?
Will we still need any rainwater garden or anything other than just the previous payment?
That's one of the things that the Watershed is taking a look at in the, kind of in the final design. There may still be the need for a small pond outlet. What happens is, when the water drains through the Percola, it goes down through what would be a larger base than you would usually have for a, I almost think of it more as how you would build a golf green or an athletic field versus how you would build an actual parking lot. So it does have some under drainage that, in theory, if it was a large, strong rain, that would still carry some of the water off to the side. So there will be probably a small swale, but the treatment capacity that we need is not very large compared to if you would have just done it as asphalt.
One other thing, since this sounds like one of those nice, innovative things that other, like Nancy said, other businesses might want to try, and we might love to have them try. As this goes forward, and we've had a little bit of experience with it, it would be nice to put it along with some of the other things we're doing up on the website so people can take a look at the process and document it a bit, as this does have some good possibilities. So to make it easy for, you know, I assume some residents might even decide this would make a great driveway or something, or a deck, because it wouldn't pond water up. So the more we could have some information about how this is working, the better it might be for the community.
That's a great point. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion? Remember to add on, subject to the additions of the Park and Rec Director and the Attorney.
I would move to authorize the city manager to execute the cost-share agreement with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District for the construction of a driveway and parking lot for Birch Island Woods Conservation Area, also subject to the conditions and terms by the city attorney and the Park and Rec Director, Jay Lotthammer.
Okay. Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. The motion passes. Next, we're going to hear about pickleball.
Yes, Your Honor, I am excited to tell you about this. This is a grant that we received from the United States of America Pickleball Association. Probably never thought you would hear that in city government. But pickleball is sweeping the nation. And if you haven't played it, you likely will over the next few years. It is a fun sport. I will tell you that on May 3rd, we had over 50 people at the Senior Center or Pioneer Park, where there are two tennis courts. And those two tennis courts, in a matter of about five to 10 minutes, get converted into a total of four pickleball courts. And if you go there on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, you will see 40 to 50 people playing pickleball, some sitting, waiting their turn, and having great camaraderie. But on May 3rd, when we went there for the official first serve, Mr. Getcho and I attended. And I would like to tell you that I served the ball over to him, and he promptly whiffed. He served the ball back to me, and I promptly whiffed. And so we're still trying to figure this game out, but I think we have a few years to be able to do that. But for any of you that may know people that head out west for the winter, like my parents do over the last few years, the southern and western states at some of the retirement communities, it has been a very big hit, and it is coming this way. Last year, at the community center indoors, this same group was playing at the gym in the community center. And so this goes to help with offset some of the costs of the nets. They're very self-sufficient. We have a NAC box or a storage box out by the courts, and they come out and unlock it, set it up. And it is pretty neat to see. You can get some very serious, quick rallies going. It's like a wiffle ball, and it's kind of a combination between table tennis, racquetball, and tennis. And it is a pretty neat sport to watch. And it is really invigorating some of the use down at the Senior Center. So we were happy to be able to obtain this grant for $250.
Great. Is there a motion?
I would move that we accept the USA PA Training Funds awarded to the City of Eden Prairie in the amount of $250 to be used toward expansion of the outdoor pickleball courts at Pioneer Park.
Second.
Any questions for Mr. Lotthammer? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Number three, the Metropolitan Regional Arts Council Grant.
Yes, we've been fortunate to receive a few of these grants over time. The Regional Arts Council is really the group in the art world that's receiving legacy funds and then distributing them out. And so we've had good contacts with them in what we would qualify for. And this is for a planning and strategic planning grant with the community theater group, Eden Prairie Players. And as you know, we have a very active and engaged group of people in this community that support the theater and are involved in a lot of the plays and performances that we have. And what this does is it provides dollars for some consulting and process that will help them look forward over the next 10 to 20 years to look at what is their mission, their vision, what strategic direction should they look to head in as a group. So as we work with them, they're not a commission, but we work with them sometimes very similar to how we work with commissions or volunteer groups. This is a group that is very excited to have that opportunity to sit down and do a somewhat of a retreat strategic planning opportunity. And this provides those professionals that can help them through and understand the theater market and community. So we feel good about receiving that grant.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Lotthammer? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to accept the grant award from Metropolitan Regional Arts Council in the amount of $1,500 for strategic planning services.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, we are now, at the end of our meeting, we are going to adjourn to closed session.
Yes, Your Honor, I request that we move to a closed session to discuss settlement of the threatened litigation against Verapath. I anticipate that it's, that we will come out of closed session to take action if the council is of such a mind.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So we'd come out back into open session.
Right, so I'm not going to adjourn the meeting?
Right.
We're just going to get up and leave?
That's correct. And we'll be back.
All right, we'll be back.
So where's the pickle?